There we are. Welcome, welcome to tunnel meeting number sixty-six. It's September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, and today we joined by, let me admit, one additional person. We're joined by Fly, Taffo, Fuji, Ian, Judith, Tommy, Walter, William, and Knitschi. Thanks all for joining. Um, the main agenda item of today, which is, um, not, it was outside of the usual, was the Code of Conduct for the ambassador program. Um, we'll go over the document and hopefully find consent on implementing it. And we'll start off with the workgroup update and get a couple of mentions in for upcoming events. And at the end of the call, there's space for open topics. A quick reminder on what the ambassador program even is. We're a group of enthusiasts who are in self-organizing workgroups and all circling around the Singularity Net ecosystem and contributing to its growth. So, yeah, if you're looking for people to hang out with and collaborate with, do join us on Discord. There's a Getting Started channel, which will help you getting started. And then, I guess without further ado, let's dive right into the, to the workgroups and their updates. And the order has shifted a little bit with the incubation workshop, which should be the think, uh, think tank for Incubation Guild, uh, taking place later today after this tunnel. Fly, could you entice us to, to join in there?
Yeah, sure. Just give me, give me just a sec. Yeah, well, uh, this week is the first think tank, so I welcome everyone to submit, uh, submit any topics or subjects for discussion or just post it here in the chat, everyone. Uh, but yeah, the goal of incubation is to incubate ideas to improve the ambassador program. And, uh, we would love to source wisdom, knowledge, the questions from the community. And then, yeah, kind of work through these during incubation. And also, we're kind of resynchronizing with strategy over the next weeks and, um, developing a workflow between us where topics, uh, will get taken forward by strategy, um, after incubation. Think tank. Yeah, man. Uh, welcome.
Thanks for that. Looking forward. And then next on the list is the archival workgroup, which currently doesn't have a representative in this call. Um, it's, uh, it's a bi-weekly call and tomorrow it's, uh, thirteen UTC. And basically, if you're interested in anything related to archiving all the things we do as an ambassador program, that's the place to be. So do up on, if you're interested in that. Then another bi-weekly, um, call on that same thirteen UTC slot on Wednesdays is the D Work PBL workgroup. Um, Taffo, can you give us a little update there?
For sure. And the biggest update is that we have a test website up, so everybody can see what content we've been working on. And the next week, when it comes, we will be, then probably do the safety net now, because we can actually see it in the website and, and rate it how well we are doing. We also had, uh, in the last call, we already had some new content coming up and shared each other some audio lessons and you specializing in the work is what we did. And there was actually new more lessons we created that wasn't even planned and a bit of like changing around stuff. We, we thought that it's on onboarding, we should actually tell people how to get all that stuff and how to set these kinds of uh, like small, like zero level of things up to, all these lessons are up now. And, uh, yeah, over this week, I will be updating the test server too, so then you will be seeing the updates there too.
Thank you. Um, I do see next on the list being the process modeling workgroup, but correct me if I'm wrong, that's currently on pause?
Yeah, so the process modeling itself will discontinue, but I don't know if you're on the second page, you have this knowledge-based workgroup that is, uh, a new, uh, workgroup that is on Mondays, at least one Monday it was. It, it will happen again in two weeks. And if you want to kind of learn what we did, uh, we created, uh, three videos, um, two of describing the workgroup itself, one presenting how do we organize the resources, links and assets we have been creating on the ambassador program. And then as meeting summary to give a slight overview of the work session itself. Um, and yeah, that will be then, uh, where, yeah, and the call out for here and for ambassadors is that I recommend every ambassador and every person who is leading a workgroup to actually watch these recordings. You will find them in the, uh, the meeting summary that's our meeting summary channel or quickly in the process quick. And because we will be now needing all the information we have been created and gathering in one place, so we can create that homepage of a kit book we have and update it to the latest stage, so that we can share the world what we have been doing and what we have put, what this program is now.
Good stuff. Um, I do not have it on the next page. Uh, I, I checked the calendar and it's, it's currently not, uh, a recurring, uh, bi-weekly call.
Yeah, yeah, we, we made a decision on the call that it's gonna be, because we didn't really know is it going to be weekly or bi-weekly or, and for now it's going to be bi-weekly.
Okay, cool. Uh, so that will pop up in the public calendar. Let me just give that one a shout out. Um, it's also linked below the video. Uh, you can add it to your, your own, uh, Google calendar, so you won't have to miss any of the meetings. All right, that brings us to the next one, um, being the strategy workgroup at, uh, Wednesday sixteen UTC. And for that, uh, Tommy, can I ask you?
Yes, absolutely. This one I will be happy to talk on. Um, yeah, strategy is just finishing up with what Peter's gonna go into a little bit later, the code of conduct. Uh, we started initially, it was months ago with the code of ethics, uh, but it was decided to let that, um, uh, lie for a while, because we want to bring in AGI, AI into ethics. And we went back and worked on code of conduct and we came to conclusion last week, or actually hopefully today. Uh, so strategy is in a, in a little bit of flux. I will hold a meeting tomorrow. Um, but Fly has had a fantastic concept and, uh, he, incubation and strategy used, used to bounce off each other. And, um, I'm not saying we're doing exactly the same, but he has rebranded it to think tank, um, which is really what we need uh, to go forward in the SNET system here. So today, uh, after this meeting, a little bit after this meeting, we'll have the first ever um, think tank by Fly. Tomorrow, I will still con, uh, continue with Strategy Guild until we figure things out. Don't know what the topic is. Might be conflict resolution. Uh, so if you have nothing to do with your very valuable time, join me tomorrow. Uh, but certainly join Fly, uh, later this afternoon, because I think it's gonna be a, a pretty interesting meeting. And, and that's about it for strategy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good stuff. Next one on the list will be the Treasury Guild, and I think I can go back to Taffo for that one.
Um, this week is going to be very revealing. Um, we're going to have a bit of a look into the dashboard. We have a new version on my website and then I played around with our collected data that we have from D Work that has more detail. It's on Power BI. So we, this is, I did some pictures, but, uh, on the call itself, I will be, you'll be clicking buttons and see can drill down quite detail with what you want to receive. And yeah, over the last week, we also put in some insights from Treasury Guild, like how people are doing tasks and how could we improve that? Um, uh, yeah, one notice that D Work lately has been bugging a lot. I haven't been able to use D Work for like four days now. So we skipped also rewarding people. So hopefully this won't last too long, otherwise we need to start changing, uh, platforms. Um, but yeah, I will recommend joining to Treasury Guild if you want to see how our contributions look like in statistics.
Boom. Um, I, I did see D Work, uh, earlier, like an hour ago. It, it was working-ish. Um, not super smooth, but it, it did pop up. So I'm hopeful. Um, but yeah, as you said, if it, if it keeps acting up like this, um, we might need to look into alternatives. All right. Uh, that brings us to the onboarding workgroup. Uh, Sugar, you just joined. I think I've noticed that accurate are you in here you are. Can I ask you to talk about this?
Hi, everyone. Um, so the onboard workgroup, uh, last Thursday, they discussed about, um, the last onboarding session we had and then we take away from the session. Um, we also noted that the onboarding is less on how to become an ambassador, but more about how you can contribute to the ambassador program. And we also agreed that, um, it's, the onboarding process is still ongoing and so we would like all the workgroups to have a way of onboarding people into their workgroup, you know, to guide them when they have new persons coming to their workgroup, guide them and just to keep reinforcing the decentralized message about how it's more about them to contribute to the program than just about having the role, the ambassador role. And then we talked about, uh, we discussed and looked at the Getting Started channel, the document we had drafted and, um, we tried to resolve the comments that we had on, on the documents. We are still fine tuning it, so we can have it up in the channel where it's supposed to be. Uh, we, on other business, we talk about, um, getting in touch with the video workgroup to put the onboarding sessions in several clips or probably to edit the video and put it on YouTube. Um, that's, that's that about it, about our meeting. So we have our next meeting this Thursday. You're free to come in and join anyone who's interested.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And then next on the list is another bi-weekly call. Um, Fly, do you want to perhaps shine a light on what would happen last week or foreshadowing the next week?
Uh, yes, AI Sandbox is a place to play around with, uh, AI tools, which are available to use, some free, some premium. Um, and we'll be aligning ourselves in these coming weeks with knowledge graphs, as it's quite a big thing in the Singularity Net ecosystem. So, um, if you want to learn more about knowledge graphs and work and making arrow, uh, we'll be doing that in AI Sandbox in the future, which is not this week, a next week. So welcome to come. Yeah.
Awesome. And let's see, then next on the list will be the Writers' Workgroup. Knitschi.
Are you? Yeah, hello guys. Uh, thank you, Nick.
All good? Yes, go for it.
All right. Um, so last week we had one of our bi-weekly meetings, um, where we, uh, edited for free, um, articles together, like a cohort session for the writers. So, uh, apart from that, we also, um, add, add an, um, interested party in, in joining the scribblers. So, uh, we had, uh, missed out the, uh, writers' work with test. And, uh, also I'd like to, uh, say that we also, um, still doing the final reviews for a recent applicant, um, I think Lady Tempest. So yeah, she, uh, her test was really good. Uh, so waiting to have a professional call with her to escalate to our article contribute and give our necessary resources to need moving forward. Um, also, we, um, also worked on a few ideas, uh, got our first atomic essay submission, uh, also in review. I didn't face right now. Uh, we also went through, um, a few, uh, ideas on what we want to work on, uh, moving forward. I just shared a few updates to the workgroup and I think, yeah, we're pretty good. Uh, also, uh, Twitter dot verified, so we I recently reached out to Raul to have it received and, uh, looking for how to start contributing on that. Isn't it a delicate feature? And, uh, yeah, I think that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Thank you. And I did see a article pop up on the, on the podcast. It's a nice one. Um, let's maybe put it in the video description as well of this call. Um, do you have the URL available maybe for putting it in chat?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. Yeah, I'll show you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Uh, then next on the list is the Video Workgroup, which I keep putting on the slide that that's the monthly update, which is not accurate. Um, Ro wasn't able to make this call, uh, but he, uh, shared a little bit, uh, on text. Uh, basically, um, coming Friday during the, uh, call, the new onboarding steps for the workgroup, uh, will be shared, as there were, uh, yeah, there was quite some interest for new members. So the process of onboarding into the video workgroup is, uh, reviewed. And, uh, for summaries, the template, um, is in process of, uh, being finalized. And yeah, that's pretty much, uh, the Video Workgroup. So if you're interested in those topics, please join in on Friday at fifteen UTC. Then, uh, last but not least on the list is the Education Workgroup. Tommy, can I ask you?
Ya'uzza, 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 education. Who needs it? That was part of the takeaway from yesterday's meeting. We had a very raucous, um, meeting with a number of newbies, number of oldies, and education has been working a couple of weeks on, um, creating a higher level education video using Nvidia, uh, which is an AI video to, uh, help educate ambassadors, uh, advanced ambassadors, so to speak, um, in outbound communications about the spinoffs and about the ecosystem. Um, so yesterday's meeting, uh, was, um, a really good discussion in what we should be doing and shouldn't be doing. Uh, it was eye-opening, uh, to me as the facilitator, because it was totally uh, unexpected, but it was, uh, very welcome. Uh, so some people thought that we should be doing onboarding videos and as I explained, there's an onboarding, uh, workgroup. And that's not what the current initiative that we'd been working on for a couple of weeks was about. Uh, some people, uh, thought that we should not have to educate ambassadors. Uh, statement being that, well, if they're ambassadors, they should already know what it is that they're doing. I, as an educator, um, and, and coming from Cardano for seniors, feel that education is always needed, no matter what age, uh, what capability, you always wanna, um, level yourself up. Um, and we, uh, coming out of Fly's sandbox, uh, we started discussing, um, knowledge graphs, uh, educating, uh, AI and specifically a video in video, uh, which took me about four minutes to, to create a video. So after yesterday's conversation and meeting, I don't know what direction education is going to take on this. Uh, so next Monday, uh, at nineteen hundred UTC, we're gonna continue this conversation is, and, and it's a serious one. I, I'm smiling, I'm laughing, but it's really serious. Do you as an ambassador need education in order to talk more intelligently, uh, about the ecosystem that you're involved in? Should we as ambassadors, uh, develop educational programs to educate ourselves? Um, that's really what the question is. And what direction, direction should we take? So tune in next Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um, that concludes the workgroup updates portion. Um, I want to throw a couple of short, uh, mentions before moving on to the code of conduct topic. Um, well, very first one being, uh, coming Thursday, um, at two time slots, um, at nine and nineteen UTC. Uh, there's an ID Fest for Deep Funding Round Three. And so far, I saw in a sheet, uh, already over forty signups, so it's, uh, very promising. Uh, looking forward to that one. Uh, so yeah, do up on, um, uh, two time slots to accommodate for, uh, well, basically for a global audience. Um, yeah. Do hope to see you on those. And an additional, um, yet again, uh, reminder on the Supervisory Council election, uh, applications are open. Uh, they close on the first of October and this Thursday at seventeen UTC, we'll have a second AMA session, um, which also will be attended by Ben Gerzler. Uh, there's a AMA forum which, um, is linked in the blog post. I'll comment it on the video as well, when it's on YouTube. Um, yeah, it's basically an AMA forum. Anything, uh, you feel like asking about the Supervisory Council election or the broader, uh, progressive decentralization process, feel free to put it into that form and hope to see you join on, on Thursday. All right, now we get to the, well, the, the meteor topic of today's, um, of today's tunnel. And there will be a consent check on the code of conduct. We've worked, um, I kind of lost track how many weeks, but it's, it's been in the works for a while. Um, basically, it was also shared on, uh, all the channels. Um, it's basically a code of conduct for the ambassador program. And hopefully today we would be able to go over it and have a check on consent. If there's, uh, things that need to be amended, please do speak up. Um, then we can, uh, potentially discuss. But yeah, I think, uh, I'll simply go over it to ensure that, um, it's, it's two pages or one and a half. I'll try to, uh, not make this last like a full half an hour of, of just me reading out the document. Um, but let's, yeah, it's a, it's a couple of, um, portions. I think after every portion, I'll do a quick check, uh, to see if there's any comments on that. Just to avoid that I'm reading out the document for ten minutes straight right now. Any initial thoughts on that? I'll make it a bit bigger so it's actually readable on screen. All right, um.
Can you talk in Zoom chat?
I can. Should be in chat, huh? Um, so yeah, basically, this is, um, intended for, um, the moment you apply for a ambassador role, um, you would be well, expected to, uh, to adhere to this code of conduct. Um, so yeah, the first part is a bit formal, uh, saying, as a member of Singularity Net and or Singularity Net Ambassador, I recognize the importance of fostering a community that upholds the values and principles of Singularity Net. To ensure a respectful and productive environment, I commit to adhering to the following code of conduct. Um, I shall notice sometimes the wording is a little bit, I mean, it's, it's kind of formal in a way. Um, but the intention there is to provide clarity. Uh, starting off with, uh, respect and inclusivity. I will treat all individuals with respect and consideration, regardless of their background, identity or opinions. Second bullet, I will promote an inclusive atmosphere that welcomes diverse perspectives and encourages constructive dialogue. Quick check on the room. Any, um, any issues there? Any considerations? Everybody happy? I won't make it mandatory for everybody to, uh, put a thumbs up. Let's, let's, um, in light of being practical, let's simply, um, uh, make yourself heard if it's, uh, something you don't agree with or you figure that needs to be amended. Uh, then second point is professionalism. I will engage in all interactions and discussions with professionalism and courtesy. I will refrain from using offensive language, derogatory remarks, or engaging in personal attacks. I am committed to continuous self-improvement, seeking to enhance my communication skills, ethical understanding and knowledge of the Singularity Net ecosystem, and to improve my ability to communicate about SNET effectively. Quick check. Please do not hesitate to unmute and, uh, make yourself known if there's, uh, something you don't agree with. All right, then point three, clear and thoughtful communication. I will communicate clearly and thoughtfully, ensuring that my messages contribute positively to discussions. I will strive to convey my ideas and opinions in a manner that fosters understanding and collaboration. For example, to follow through on discussions and not to disrupt and then leave. Disagreeing with each other is fine, but do stick around for resolutions. Quick check on the room. It's a bit of a formal process like this, but, uh, as long as nobody objects, let's, uh, continue. Ethical behavior. I will uphold the ethical standards, which are currently being developed in all my interactions within the ambassador program. I will act in a manner that reflects positively on this Singularity Net community and its reputation. Any strong objections there? Then please let yourself be known.
Is it like a place order for some additional document, the ethical standards or or it's standards from some other place?
No, the, the former.
We won't get one. Yeah, the grip, don't.
I'm having trouble understanding. I'm also not sure if you're intentionally unmuting. Sugar, was that intentional? I think it may not have been. Uh, yeah, yeah, so to answer you, um, that is to be developed. All right, uh, we're making, uh, progress here, almost getting there. Um, then the fifth one is on confidentiality and privacy. I respect the confidentiality of any sensitive information shared within the ambassador program. I will not share personal or private information of fellow members without their explicit consent. And when private information is shared, either in meetings or Discord or other socials, community members should be aware and respect confidentiality and privacy concerns. Quick check if there's any strong objections on this. Seems all good. It would be a bit of a surprise as well, but, uh, not judging. Um, then on number six, which is the last one, violations and potential resolutions, resolution solutions. Apologies. I'll strive to discuss observed violations of this code of conduct within the appropriate channels once established. The suggested channel is the round table, which is, uh, channel for informative discussions by the ambassadors. Or if the issue is within, uh, if the issue is with the round table, the channel should be the Supervisory Council. In case of a violation report, there are multiple steps that can be taken. Uh, see the conflict resolution document. And there is no link there because that's And there is no link there because that conflict resolution document is still under construction. Probably, as Tommy mentioned, the next step within strategy guide. A quick check if the number six is okay as well.
And then some. I'd like to raise a controversial topic on this.
Sure.
We're using the name that had been suggested and bandied about as the round table. It's also been suggested to call it the leadership group, which caused issues. And it's also been suggested to call it the council. Whatever the name is, it really doesn't matter. It's the concept.
Yep, yeah, fully agree. I mean, I don't think that's controversial, but you're right. All right, well, then the concluding words are, "By adhering to this code of conduct, I contribute to maintaining a positive and respectful environment within the SNET ambassador program. I recognize that my actions reflect not only on myself, but also on the broader Singularity Net community. And a little disclaimer that this code of conduct is subject to periodic review and updates to ensure its relevance and effectiveness." And that pretty much concludes the document. Just a quick check if anybody has issues with the last portion of it.
I mean, maybe we changed the round table to ambassador's channel because this is a channel which already exists.
Could say that makes sense, yeah.
And what do you, does SC is supervisory council? If that's the case, maybe fully write it out.
Agreed. Yeah, that's why I'm clear. You're right. And I quite agree. Oh, I can't accept the, I think, Tommy, maybe you are the channel, the document owner, you would need to accept the changes. I'm not entirely sure. Yeah, and ambassador general channel is quite up for it, I feel. All right, with these two additional changes, does that create anybody strongly not agreeing with it? Then please speak up.
Where do we find supervisor accounts channel? Is this going to be created or are we talking about the discussion channel?
Well, no, right now there's no supervisory council channel. This, basically, this last portion was added in the case of, like, if the issue you're having is with the round table, then reporting to the round table doesn't really make sense because they're biased or like part of the conflict. That's why it's included here. But I think once the supervisory council is after the ongoing election, yeah, there should be a post, ask something to the supervisory council, kind of Discord channel. But that's, right now, that's not in place. Does that make sense?
And I also hope that the round table, if the issue is with the round table, I think if the issue is with the ambassador program. Because that's more clear. Because we're talking about ambassador program in this document.
Yeah, fair. I'm not sure if that fully covers, because in a way I was intending for this to.
Yeah, I disagree with that, Tevo, because it's not the ambassador program. It's the conflict resolution mechanism within it, and we haven't figured that out yet. It's not actually the program itself, but it's.
The ambassadors?
It's the ambassadors or whomever, but that's why, yeah, that's why I had named it the round table, just to, you know, but it's the ambassadors themselves.
Okay, so they are ambassadors then?
Make sense like this? That being said, well, the document on conflict resolution, as mentioned in.
Six B.
Ah, yes, there it is. That will fully detail any and all, yeah, potential situations, that's right. So this is a bit general, not saying. All right. Yeah, a quick check, I guess, for the full documents. I mean, seeing there was not much conflict on the portions. But yeah, to formalize it and establish consent would be good. So have a full room check on if we can agree to implement this. Considering like, should I ask everybody now individually or do a thumbs up or simply assume that people will speak up if they disagree? I think I'll go with the latter. And if nobody is speaking up, then I think we can establish consent on implementing this. Good stuff. All right, yeah, cool. That kind of concludes this topic on the agenda. Awesome. Let me hop back. All right, that's just a quick check. Yeah, that does bring us to the open round session of this, of this call. Let me figure out full screen, just not working. Great. There we go. Cool. Yeah, if there's anybody with any questions, any ideas, any introductions they want to make of themselves for those joining in for the very first time, it's all good. The floor is open to anybody.
Yes, I have a question. So last Friday, I was trying to join the writers' workgroup. And I was just in a waiting room and I wasn't being let in. So was there a meeting happening at some other time? Was it delayed or do I have a wrong link? Or was I just not, I was just, I think it was the waiting room or my screen just said, "Meeting is about to start," but then it never started. So I don't know if I had a wrong link or if it was just delayed. Was it on time? Like, did it happen on time?
It was delayed a bit. Canit, can you speak to this?
Yes, so the call actually happened, that would be fourteen UTC. What time did you try joining?
Just whatever was on the calendar, like the time that was indicated on the calendar.
How many minutes are rated? Because by the, I don't know if you have access to writer's workgroup channel, but I see that the group most opened eleven minutes later.
Oh, well, I stayed about ten minutes, so I missed it by that one minute. All right, that's probably the issue then. All right, cool. But I did join the video after, which was forty minutes delayed, but I waited for the forty minutes for that one. All right, that's it then. Thank you. And by the way, good job on getting all the channels back up after the hack. Good, good work.
Yeah, sometimes. We should be giving out points for waiting room duration. I don't think there's any way of tracking it, but. All right. Anybody else? Completely open topics. Feel free to ask or mention anything you want. We've got nine more minutes in the slot.
I think my topics of interest would be deep funding voting and the supervisory council meeting, which I know you did have a link to. I think those are important notes. And I will give a plug for those of you, if anybody is in industry or commerce or business and you have processes in what you do, and even here in the Singularity Net system, as we go towards AI and AGI. When I was a young puppy in the insurance business and I was doing less than a million dollars in sales, one of my insurance companies forced me to take something back then called best practices. And it's very similar to what Tivo is doing through process, the PBL. And within a couple of years, my sales went from a million to over twenty-five million. And this is over twenty years ago, so equate the numbers. And it's actually longer than that. I would highly recommend any young people that have never gone through a process like this, come take Tivo's program, his class, learn from him. It will, once you get through it, it will change the way you do business and the way you handle processes. I highly, highly recommend it. Tivo himself, you know, you got to learn to take him with a grain of salt, but his course is awesome. So please, please join us. But Peter, I would want to know about the SC council, the CECOM, and also deep funding.
Sure thing.
Actually, it's not a course, it's a workgroup. But I guess when creating a course, it's much like a higher level of learning stuff. Because when you teach to learn or like teach how to teach, then you actually learn much faster compared to just learning. And actually, the same thing for the knowledge-based workgroup. So check the meeting summary and ask questions. And I will be start bugging people and pinging people about the knowledge-based workgroup. Because this is an opportunity for you to learn about the things that the ambassadors already have been doing and the workgroups, the assets they're creating. And you will be taking in these documents and there will be action items that to write summaries for this. What is the document talked about? So all of that information will be put on Kitbook. And there is no wrong answers. Like, I don't see here that people are writing something and they get better quite faster. And you get rewarded for learning, so this is not a thing that happens everywhere often. But in here, you do get rewarded for learning.
Yeah, right, fully right in calling that one out. That's, yeah, it's quite amazing. Yeah, and to answer you, Tommy, not to be lame and lazy, but both of them have websites, both the SC election and deep funding, scheduling wise. I did put a link in chat, it's decentralization-events singularity.net.io. You can also find like the previous AMA session recording there and the timelines on, well, all the events. Basically, the, I think, top of mind, until the first of October, people can candidate themselves for the election. And then there's a, I should not be doing this top of mind. There's a two-week period, I believe, where there will be community. People will get the opportunity to present themselves. And then the eleventh, there's a week-long voting period.
Yeah, I was just bringing it up for you to give a commercial, you know, for everybody else. That was all.
Appreciate it. And for deep funding, and that might as well check out the next step there, which you can always find at deepfunding.ai/schedule. Right now, it's in the stable period and the vote there starts October 2nd. So yeah, two quite important votes coming up for the token holders. All right. Quick check in the room, anything we should be touching on right now during the session?
Yeah, I'd just like to plug, Judith reminded me of something. We had a hack on our Discord channels and everything. I don't know if you know what full bar means, but everything was full bar. And it's slowly rebuilding, but we're missing some stuff and we don't have some stuff. And there's some links and things missing. Fly has a document up about incubation ideas. If you have any thoughts about Discord on how to reorganize and if we're missing something and if you, if you don't recognize it or you can't find it, put it in that document of Fly's, please. And we'll talk about it and we'll get the Monics or Peter or someone who can. And you may have a fantastic idea that we should have it this way. And maybe it'll go that way.
Yeah, absolutely. Quite flexible there. If there's things that need to be changed, we can. There's quite some feedback that the Discord server is a bit chaotic. A little trick there is to simply minimize all the categories. And then whenever there's a new message somewhere, it will just highlight that channel under the category. Keeps it somewhat manageable to me at least. All right. Before I forget, Rojo asked me to do a quick recap on the, on the meeting for the recording. So I'll do just that. Yeah, basically, today's time hall number sixty-six started with a bit of an update on all the workgroups, which I won't be repeating here. You need to check the full recording. And two callouts, both for the supervisory council AMA with Ben Gertzel this Thursday and also on Thursday, the deep funding round three ID fest, where all the proposers have the opportunity to present their proposals. And the second portion of the meeting, we spent on finding consent on the code of conduct, which we've been working on for a couple of weeks now. And, well, we did find consent, some small additions here and there, nothing super major, but we agreed. And yeah, it's ready to be implemented now. I think that pretty much covers all. Yeah, that's for the recap. Quick final check if anybody wants to add something. And otherwise, I would like to thank everybody for being here.